Skills USA Virginia is an organization for students enrolled in career and technical occupations in Virginia's high schools and community colleges. All of Osborne Skills USA state competitors came back with medals this year. As I call your names, come forward. Stephanie is a senior from the cosmetology program. She won gold in the fantasy mannequin category. Stephanie competed in a live virtual setting where she demonstrated her skills and also had to present orally. Stephanie's competition does not have a national category and stops at the state level. Congratulations to you, Stephanie. And next we have Nalan Theodore. Nalan is a junior from the emergency medical technician program. He won the bronze medal in the spelling contest. And now we have Samantha Espana, Destiny Taylor, and Jasmine Walton. These seniors from the criminal justice program won gold in the crime scene investigation contest as a team under the supervision of Mr. Derek Black, the new criminal justice teacher. A big thank you goes to Lieutenant Tara Petty, Officer Alyssa Dranko, and Officer Stephanie Curry of the Manassas City Police Department for helping with the team's success and their training and teaching the students their high standards and skills which led them to their success. This team will go on to the national competitions this month and represent Virginia State as the crime scene investigation team. Congratulations to all of you for that. Additionally, Nalan Theodore was also elected as a Skills USA Virginia state officer, allowing him to make history for Osborne High School's chapter. Nalan will represent Virginia State Skills USA at the nationals conference and participate in various state conferences and events this coming school year. So congratulations to all of them. Ms. Dottavala, I've asked her to come and introduce her team of teachers that help these amazing students, and then I'll ask you guys to come on down and take a picture with them.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity. And I just want to say that each year we take our students to competitions and each year we prepare, but behind the scenes, there is a great team that supports us. And starting with Mr. Flugrat and Betsy Ingalls Whitaker, who without them, we really couldn't even fathom that we can do this. We do have a few advisors here. Mr. Derek Black is our first-year teacher for criminal justice at Osborne. Lieutenant Petty, without her support, our team couldn't win our competitions and come close to national winning year after year. So thank you, Lieutenant Petty. Officer Dranko, and I believe Officer Curry is not here right now, but this is the team that trains our criminal justice. And of course, our fearless leaders are a little shy.
Thank you so much, and it's an honor to be the lead advisor for Skills USA for Osborne High School. And I will continue to do my best. Thank you.
Everybody cool? Let's see. Make sure I can see everyone. Yeah, no, I can't see you, teacher. Back here. Look. Okay. Everybody ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect. Congratulations, everybody. Yes. Mr. Theodore actually has something prepared to say to us tonight.
Hello? Hello? Okay. I'm not used to being called Mr. Theodore, but, all right, so here we go. Back in April of 2021, during this spike in crazy coronavirus courses, classes were still going on, everything was still kicking off, but one day, me and Ms. Dottavala sat down and we just poured over the application for state office. A few months earlier, I've actually been referred by the head of the state, Ms. Joyce Price. She said that I would be perfect for the state officer role and even could branch out to the national officer role. Due to all the activities that I am involved in, I settled for the state officer role, knowing that I could make my mark on Osborne High School. And we just poured throughout this application, checking off boxes, meeting requirements, and without her, I would like to thank her. Without her, I don't know if I would even be a state officer without her. And it's been an amazing ride. It's been a challenging one, too. I had to cut some hours out of school in order to fill out this application. It was a time-consuming process that took almost six hours to complete over a three-day span. So we took our time, we turned in the application on time, and I found out probably around the end of April that I would be the state officer and I earned a bronze medal. And I was so, so proud of myself, I was so happy. I couldn't have done it without my family. I thank my parents, my mom, my dad, even my little brother. Without him, I wouldn't have any of the motivation I do today. And I decided to go for this role because I wanted to show students that they could be me. I'm not the special person, the special idol that you guys can be. I've been trying to show everybody that you can be me, just work hard, find something you're good at, you can make your mark on history, and you don't have to change, you can change Osborne for the better. I wouldn't have been here again without Ms. Dottavala, and I would like to thank one of my sponsors, Ms. Stephanie Corbin. She's not present with us today. And I just am thankful for this team behind me that aided me and the seniors here that encouraged me to go higher than I could ever reach. And I'm thankful for the school board for supporting Skills USA and Osborne High School in general. Thank you for your time.
Just another display of Osborne excellence. Congratulations to all of them. Next, we have the Prince William County SEPTA Outstanding Secondary Special Education Teacher Award, and that goes to Megan Barber. I believe she's here tonight. Megan Barber is a special education employment readiness teacher at Osborne High School. She just completed her second year in the position with MCPS and Osborne after a distinguished career as a special education teacher in Fairfax County Public Schools. Ms. Barber actively researches and implements new ideas that positively impact student achievement. For example, she created a school business with her students which reinforced their independent living skills by making and selling holiday crafts. She has also partnered with local businesses and Georgetown South to collect and repurpose gently-used toys. Ms. Barber even visited her students' homes during Anti-Bullying Week and provided them with custom T-shirts that she paid for herself. She works collaboratively with her colleagues both at school and in central office to maximize school-based and community-based learning outcomes for students. Her work ethic, her innovative approach to teaching and learning, and her genuine care and commitment for her students distinguishes her from her peers. As the collaborative team leader for the adapted curriculum program, she has created ways for the teachers and support staff to work more effectively and collaboratively, which has resulted in positive outcomes both for students who have returned to in-person learning and those remaining home for distance learning. Ms. Barber is a true gem, an all-star, one of a kind, and Osborne feels very fortunate that she chose to dedicate her life and her love of learning to Osborne High School. It is for these reasons and many more that she is deserving of the SEPTA Outstanding person is Sarah Corredetti. Secondary Special Education Teacher Award. Congratulations, Ms. Barber. Each year, MCPS nominates a staff member for the award who inspires students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn, has the admiration of students, parents, and colleagues, plays an active role in fostering community, creates a culture of respect and success, and demonstrates leadership and innovation in and out of the classroom. On Wednesday, May 12, Dr. Newman and Ms. Wingfield surprised Ms. Corredetti with the news that she is the division's nominee for the Mary Bukovares Virginia Teacher of the Year Award. She is a fourth-grade English for Speakers of Other Languages teacher at Baldwin Elementary School and is praised for her enthusiasm and dedication. She has nearly 20 years of teaching experience, which includes many years teaching ESOL to all ages. She has also taught ESOL at Mayfield and Biology at Osborne. She has also spent years volunteering within the community. She co-sponsored Mayfield's Garden Club and volunteered for the Prince William Conservation Association. Most recently, she has been volunteering for the Chesapeake Bay Foundation's Grasses for the Masses Program. Sponsored by the Virginia Department of Education, the Mary V. Bukovares Teacher of the Year Award is named in honor of the 1989 Virginia and National Teacher of the Year. Ms. Corredetti will compete with other teachers in Region Four, which includes Prince William, Fairfax, Loudoun, and Manassas Park City Schools, before going on to compete with additional regional winners in the state for the distinguished title. A banner recognizing the award will hang outside Baldwin Elementary in her honor for the next year. Congratulations to you. I'll be a while. The others are on the screen. Okay. No, 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 I'm sorry. There's one that's here now. Sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Next, we have the TEAM Program Awards. Ms. Garza, that's number one. Thank you. Each year, the Teacher Education and Mentor Program, known as TEAM, recognizes new teachers and mentors that have been successful throughout the year. New teachers are celebrated for having exceptional instructional practices for a beginning teacher, a motivating presence that positively impacts students, parents, and colleagues, and noteworthy accomplishments. Outstanding mentors are celebrated for their commitment to the role of mentoring, knowledge of and skill in providing instructional support to the mentee, and excellent interpersonal From Weems Elementary, the Teacher of the Year is Willow Rector. She couldn't be here today, but she is, let's see, they say that she's, her colleagues highlighted the positive impact she's had this year on her students. Her team celebrated her for being such a great addition to the Weems family, and we congratulate her in her absence tonight. And we have the Mentor of the Year from Baldwin Elementary, Joe McWalters. Ms. McWalters was recognized as the TEAM Mentor of the Year for the work that she did this year to ensure that her mentee felt confident and set up for a successful school year. Ms. McWalters was always available to support, problem-solve, and collaborate with her mentee while remaining positive and patient. Mentors play a critical role in the TEAM Program, and the impact that Ms. McWalters had on her mentee will last far beyond this year. I would like to say on Wednesday, May 19, Dr. Newman surprised both of these teachers at their schools, along with their principals and staff from the division's professional development department. Each winner was given balloons, a certificate, and a poster to hang outside their classroom for the rest of this year, for next year. An album with the photos of the winners and nominees are on the Manassas City Public Schools Facebook page, and you all are welcome to view that at any time, but we congratulate Ms. McWalters tonight. Congratulations. Oh, well, you want me to get in the picture? I'll give it to you. It's good. Yeah, it's your family. I know, it's okay. All right, here we go. I think I got everybody. One, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three. Nice smile. Look at you. Congratulations. Thank you. It's okay. Now you can do it. Okay. Okay. So here on the screen, you'll be able to see our teacher spotlights. I would like to recognize a few educators who were spotlighted in the Professional Development Hub or the PD Hub, MCPS Always Learning, during the last two months of the school year, which ended on May 28. The teacher spotlights are a component of the PD Hub that enables teachers to learn from each other's success, and we really want to celebrate these teachers. So our first one, saying Brandon Fincham from Osborne loves to come to work every day is an understatement. He is new to the Osborne family this year but has already made quite the impact. He is a CLT leader that works with his team to ensure that lessons are aligned to standards and engaging for students. He also held optional SOL prep sessions every Monday throughout the year to ensure all students were getting the support they needed. Next, we have Brenda Wambold from Round. She worked hard this year to identify successful strategies to engage her little learners and keep them excited about zooming into kindergarten every day. She is continuously trying to better her practices and do what is best for her students and their families. She created personalized Google agendas for her students throughout the year to ensure they had everything they needed to be successful, whether they were at home or in the classroom. Next, we have Erin Hart. Ms. Hart is a fourth-grade teacher at Baldwin Elementary who incorporated playlists as a way to keep students engaged in learning at their level. Students had access to a digital notebook that contained information and audio to support their learning. They also had choices of assignments to complete, all of which were differentiated to meet their needs. Our next spotlight is from Metz Middle School, and this is with the English VIII team. As a team, they feel they have really embraced that they are all in this together. The eighth-grade English team consisted of 15 members, and they have been collaborating throughout the year to ensure they are sharing best practices and successes in order to help each other provide high-quality instruction. They have been focused on finding ways to facilitate individualized groups, reading and writing conferences in a virtual environment. The teachers have also created designated spaces in the students' working Google documents where they can provide ongoing feedback. Next, we have Kristy Peace from Hayden Elementary School. She is a, let's see, first-grade ESOL teacher. She's designed a blended virtual learning environment that hooks the students from the moment they sign on. She provided virtual push-in instruction for five separate classes consisting of mostly Level 1 ESOL students this year. She utilized a variety of interactive games and tools to ensure her lessons were engaging for her students. Our next spotlight is Jean Weber. She realized that the one way to keep students engaged and enthusiastic about learning was to base instruction on their personal interest. During the pandemic, Ms. Weber found that students, especially GT students, were stressed out. Giving students flexible deadlines for projects when necessary helped ease some of their stress. Ms. Weber utilized project-based learning as a way for students to take ownership of their learning by completing and presenting their projects. And our last spotlight, this evening, is a duo from Baldwin Elementary. Kelly Quinio is a second-grade teacher who has mastered the ability to take Project Lead the Way and execute it virtually. In doing this, she has maintained the integrity of the fundamental components of this approach. Her passion and enthusiasm is shared by her students for each Project Lead the Way module, which is evident by the mastery of the material and their consistent high academic performance. The virtual PLTW experience for Baldwin Elementary students has been remarkable thanks to Susan Mayo's passion, expertise, and unwavering commitment. As the PLTW coach, she has spent countless hours adapting and modifying the modules so that all students and teachers experience the benefit of hands-on learning in a virtual environment. She arranged for supplies to be picked up by hundreds of Baldwin students throughout the year so that they could transform their homes into PLTW classrooms. So people may wonder, why are we taking time to talk about these wonderful educators? But contrary to popular opinion, even during the virtual environment, creativity was happening, and our teachers have learned that they don't work in silos, and by sharing their best practices with each other in this hub, it's allowing for more collaboration to happen and for them to make connections and network with teachers in other schools that they might not have otherwise met. And so we're very thankful that our professional development department, led by Katie Keegan, has decided to put this platform out there for our teachers to be able to glean from one another, especially during this past year, because what they've been able to do has been amazing. So congratulations to all of them for the work that they've been doing. Now, you all can join us back down front if you don't mind. I didn't have you standing there long. So this is very bittersweet. As you can see on the screen, this is our 2020-21 retirees, and this is never easy for us because no matter how long any of these people have been a part of the MCPS family, the truth of the matter is, they are a part of the family. And so they will all be missed, and we definitely thank them for the contributions that they've given us over the many years. And as I call their names, you will see just how many years we're talking about tonight. So I won't read a lot about each of them. Some of them could not be here tonight because they are out doing retiree things, and so we congratulate them in their absence, but I know they will be able to view this later, and we wanted to definitely give them their shout-out and to know that we love and appreciate all the work that they've done. I do believe that Human Resources has already provided their award to them by mail, and those that were able to pick theirs up. So we don't have a formal presentation for them tonight. In years previous, we were able to have a nice dinner for them, and of course, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to plan such an affair. But the little bit that we can do tonight to just shower them with love and appreciation is what we want to offer. So bear with me for just a few minutes. We have a few of them here, and as I call your names, retirees, please come forward. We will begin with Carrie Bland. Oh, I'm sorry. I went the wrong way. I'm sorry. Come on, Carrie. No, that's fine. That's the third one. I'm sorry. Keep it one more time. Yes, okay. Carrie Bland is a second-grade teacher at Weems Elementary School, 32 years. I'll go back. I was supposed to go down. I'm sorry. Next, we will have William Bailey, social studies teacher, Osborne High School, 14 years.
And psychology.
Okay, good. And psychology, yes. Next, we have, I believe, all the way from Richmond, Donna Blackwell, bus driver, special education, and transportation, 16 years. We have Ms. Bland here. Okay. So next, we have David Boyd, school psychologist, Metz Middle School, 25 years. And now with 19 years, Sandra Bushrod Thompson, business teacher, Osborne High School. With 19 years from Metz Middle School, Robin Campbell, school counselor. With 16 years from Jenny Dean Elementary School, translator Carmen Catala. With 21 years from Osborne High School, custodian Brenda Daniels. From Hayden Elementary School with 20 years, third-grade teacher Diane DeCoco. With eight years from Jenny Dean Elementary School, special education teacher Lynn Garner. With 20 years from Weems Elementary School, second-grade teacher Karen Kennedy. 21 years, kindergarten teacher from Hayden Elementary School, Patricia Lydon. 20 years from Metz Middle School, special education teacher Belva Neeson. With 32 years, from Mayfield Intermediate Food Services, cafeteria manager Nancy Potter. With 17 years from Weems Elementary School, interpreter, translator Betty Priliman. From Jenny Dean Elementary School, our school nurse Leslie Punsey with 10 years. With 28 years from Metz Middle School, special education teacher Jean Riley. With 15 years from Osborne High School, custodian Helen Ruffin. With 19 years from Osborne High School, physical education teacher Steve Schultz. Just like a coach, running down with those high fives. Also from Osborne High School with 20 years, English teacher Maureen Sewell. With 14 years, library media specialist from Hayden Elementary School, Glenda Smith. Let's see, 34 years, bus driver, special education, and transportation, Betty Strickland. You thought 34 was good, huh? Okay. With 44 years. I'm 48, okay. With 44 years, Osborne High School, social studies teacher Glenn Strickland. With 44 years, Osborne High School, social studies teacher Glenn Strickland. Wow. Amazing. With 21 years, intervention specialist from the central office, student services Maxine With 14 years from Jenny Dean Elementary School, computer lab assistant Katrina Ward. With 42 years, right behind Mr. Strickland there, Metz Middle School, school security With 27 years with Manassas City Schools, Metz Middle School, business teacher Dennis And I went from A to Z. With 23 years, Mayfield Intermediate School, library media specialist Linda Zioli. Look, I put him on the spot.
And I just want to thank you guys for pouring into our family, our Manassas City Public School family. And you know, we had our leadership retreat today, and our message was about protecting the first gift you were ever given, and that's your last name. And I can tell you that you have made your parents proud by the efforts that you put in to your first gift, which was your last name. But you also were given a gift of being a part of the Manassas City Public School family. And you have made all of us proud for the efforts that you've put in, whether it's from 10 years to 44 years. You'll always be a member of this family. Manassas City will always be your home. Please come back and visit. We always talk about raising the bar and building and lifting as we go for the future generations. So, please come back and instill your wisdom into the new members of Manassas City Public Schools. It's your open invitation to come to any school, any building in Manassas City at any time. Thank you for your years of service.
This is a very large group. I know. So, I might have to get everybody to come on this end, and I'll come over here. Mm-hmm. Yes. So, let's see. I know Rob and I can view it, Trish, or y'all will know. I see. You guys stay on the stairs there. This is good. Okay. I think my best bet is I'm just gonna kind of come up high. And shoot the stars, right? There you go. Everybody gonna be looking this way? Oh, I think I can see everybody. Here we go. One, two, three. Do another one. One, two, three. I believe that's it. All right. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I've been having an easy life, but you're treating me well.
He's a bad influence on different.
We have one final spotlight for tonight. I'll let them. Thank you all. Okay. Manassas City Public Schools has been the recipient of the Government Finance Officers Association's, or GFPA, or, yeah, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for multiple years and has done it again for fiscal year 2020-2021. It is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and a significant achievement for MCPS. The award is valid for one year. It reflects the commitment of Mr. Hawkins and his finance department team in assisting the school board with meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the award, MCPS had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. The guidelines are designed to assess how well our budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device, because we are saying something with the money. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and in the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. The department has received a certificate of award, which can be seen on the screen, and we would like to call Mr. Hawkins up front, and you want your budget person to come with you? Okay. Leigh Miller, who also helps with the budget, she's gonna come forward, and we're gonna ask you all to come and help us celebrate them. Thank you. Don't leave. You know the protocol. I think I'm gonna get over here, so I won't get that in the way. Thank you all. This concludes our spotlights for tonight. I'm sorry, there is one more. I'm not doing that one. I'm gonna turn that over to Ms. Stevens.
As we know, this month is Pride Month, and this will be the second year we're introducing our Pride proclamation because it values and recognizes all of our community members. So, I'm just going to read it, and then I believe we're going to vote on it. So, whereas Manassas City Public Schools is committed to creating an inclusive, safe, caring, and challenging learning environment viewed through an equity lens, and whereas the city of Manassas recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas the city of Manassas, city council has adopted a Pride proclamation annually since 2017, and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia passed the Virginia Values Act prohibiting discrimination in public places against members of the LGBTQ community, and whereas the human rights campaign HRC believes that LGBTQ individuals must be ensured equality embraced as full members of society, and whereas the National Institutes of Health, the NIH, and the National Education Association, NEA, recognize that LGBTQ youth and teens are at increased risk of violence, discrimination, and have higher suicide rates, and whereas the National School Boards Association, NSBA, believes that education is a civil right, and whereas Manassas City Public Schools are an integral part of the greater Manassas City community, and whereas the staff of Manassas City Public Schools are valued community members, and whereas it is imperative that students and staff alike, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now, therefore, the Manassas City School Board proclaims June 2021 to be LGBTQ Pride Month and urges our citizens and community members to recognize the value of and contributions made by LGBTQ staff and students and adequately promote the principles of equality and liberty. Be it further proclaimed, the Manassas City School Board urges all to respect and honor our diverse community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusivity and equity, both during Pride Month and the rest of the year.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion on the proclamation, please?
Sir, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas endorse the LGBTQ Pride proclamation.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Di Maria, second by Vice Chair Seberg, that the school board of the city of Manassas endorse the LGBTQ Pride proclamation. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it 7-0, and I'll just add that it is so important that we are inclusive, safe, and caring for all students and everyone in our community. This is a very important proclamation, so, because I think it tells the world that we want to include everyone. And too often, our LGBTQ citizens have not been treated, and still aren't, you know, the way they should be, and hopefully, this is a step that will get all of us thinking about treating everyone equally. So, thank you all for voting for this. I appreciate it. And thank you, Ms. Stevens, for reading the proclamation. I appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to board committee reports. Mrs. Seberg?
Yes. The academic committee met on May 19th. We received a presentation on the reunite, reignite, reignite, and reimagine plans, which you all will hear in upcoming meetings. Also, periodically, we review and update the student code of conduct, but there were no changes for this year.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Seberg. Policy committee, Ms. Stevens?
Yes, we didn't have any, we did have meetings that will be, have up for discussion later this evening. Two pending policies, the ACC anti-racism policy and DAB diversity, equity, and inclusion policy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevens. Ms. Di Maria, your two committees.
Well, the finance committee has not met, but the educational support committee met this week, yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
It's been a long week already. We discussed the playing fields at Osborne and the possible upgrading of those with lights and other amenities. So, that will continue and come forward eventually.
Thank you, Ms. Di Maria. Appreciate it. And then Personnel Committee, Mrs. Williams.
No report.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Are there any citizen comments? I don't see any, so I will move along to the consent agenda. May I have the motion, please?
Sir, I move the city of Manassas School Board accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Di Maria, second by Mrs. Stevens, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it 7-0, and motion passes. Next up, the discussion agenda. The first item is policies. Policy Section A, foundation and commitments and fiscal management. And I believe it says Ms. Lisa Stevens is going to present the policies that are being considered.
All right. So, the first policy up for consideration is the ACC anti-racism policy. While this is not a VSBA policy, it is a, the VSBA is working on a similar policy. This policy was crafted based on the anti-racism policies of other school divisions, I believe, Albemarle and Hampton, was it?
Albemarle, Charlotte, real city.
Exactly. Thank you. Chairman Williams, would you like me to read the policy, or?
I think the policies, is that the one that's really long?
This is the shorter one.
Okay, you can read this one.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, the other one's like three or four pages long. So, okay, so this is the anti-racism policy, code ACC. This policy is intended to officially denounce racism and all racial inequities. Racism is defined as any program or practice of discrimination, segregation, persecution, or mistreatment based on membership in a race or ethnic group. The school board of the city of Manassas Public Schools, MCPS, anti-racism policy and MCPS diversity, equity, and inclusion policy are designed to dismantle individual, institutional, and structural racism that exists in the division. Racial equity means the absence of institutional and structural barriers experienced by people based on race or ethnicity that have impeded access, opportunities, and outcomes. MCPS understands that communities of color have experienced centuries of systemic oppression. Achieving racial equity requires proactive and continuous work to dismantle systemic oppression. MCPS is committed to altering systemic power and privilege dynamics and structures. We will here elevate and recognize underrepresented voices to eliminate bias. Furthermore, Manassas City Public Schools is committed to nondiscriminatory practices with regard to sex, gender, race, color, national origin, disability, religion, ancestry, age, marital or veteran status, physical or mental genetic information, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, political affiliation, or any classification protected by applicable law. This attitude and commitment to anti-racism will guide all policies and practices concerning staff, students, educational programs and services, and individuals and entities with whom the board does business. That is the anti-racism policy in full. We met just a few weeks ago to discuss it and felt there just needed to be a few grammatical Any questions?
So, for the last, any comments with the caveat that we're gonna be voting on this the next meeting we have?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Are there any questions, comments?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so the second policy is diversity, equity, and inclusion, the DAB policy. The policy committee met a few weeks ago, made a few changes, mostly grammatical in nature. We, one of the major changes we made was in, was in paragraph six under purpose, was to add his, her, their, full measure. And then, the second bullet point underneath raised the achievement of all students while attempting to eliminate gaps between the highest and lowest performing students. Those were the main changes to the policy. Does anyone have any questions? And this will be voted on at our next meeting. Any questions? All right.
I guess that's it.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Well, I know policies can be tedious to work on sometimes, but these are, all of them are very important, and these are important, so thank you for your time to the policy committee. Next up, amendment to the Manassas City School Board Cafeteria Plan, Ms. Billy Kegwinfield.
Several amendments are being presented to revise the cafeteria plan, which is a flexible spending account, commonly known as FSAs. FSAs allow employees to have deductions taken on a pre-tax basis and use those funds for eligible medical and/or dependent care expenses. These amendments are required to ensure that our cafeteria plan is compliant with laws and regulations. The First Amendment is a limited purpose health flexible spending account. It provides employees who elect the high deductible health plan the opportunity to enroll an unlimited FSA. It's called a limited flex plan because the funds may only be used to pay for dental and/or vision services. A limited FSA is compatible with a health savings account. Employees enrolled in the high deductible health plan may now elect to have both accounts at the same time. Next slide. The purpose of the relief amendment is to remain compliant with IRS notices. The plan year 2019- The plan year 2019-2020 grace period was extended. The normal grace period would be from July 1, 2020, to August 31, 2020. It was extended to July 1, 2020, to December 31, 2020. During the grace period, participants are able to incur expenses, and this amendment provides an additional four months to incur expenses. The third and last amendment extends the grace period for up to 12 months for health flexible spending accounts and dependent care assistance plan for the current plan year, which began July 1, 2020. This means that participants may submit claims through June 30, 2020 for reimbursements for qualifying expenses. This extension does not impact the 21, 22 maximum contribution limits. I'll submit the resolutions for the school board's approval on the June 22 meeting. Upon approval, plan participants will be notified of the modifications to the cafeteria plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Winfield?
We got a quick one.
Sure.
You said it extended the time that they can put in claims to 2022, was it?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I thought you said 2020, but maybe you did.
Uh-oh, it was crap.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Winfield, appreciate that. Okay, moving along to the action agenda. The first and only item, the student reps for the 2021-2022 school year, and maybe Mrs. Williams might want to make this motion?
I would love to make this motion. Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas appoint Leva Tenoli and Danielle Vanyel, pronounced like Danielle, but with a V, Vanyel, W B, as the student representatives for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Williams, second by Vice Chair Seberg, that the school board of the city of Manassas appoint Leva Tenoli and Vanyel Davidi as the student representatives for the 2021-2022 school year. Any discussion?
I, Mr. Chair, I do have a couple things to say. We had an amazing pool of talent come to us and apply for these two positions. It's very difficult always to choose only two, but I do feel that the two that we have chosen will really serve our board well. So I'm excited for them to begin.
Thank you. And thank you for leading this process. Very important to us to have our great student reps, and as you mentioned, we had some awesome applicants. So if there's no more discussion, we'll have a vote in the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, seven zero. We have two new student reps. Thank you very much. And the last item on the agenda is board member comments, starting off with Mrs. Williams.
I just wanted to, everybody's gone now, but the pool of talent we have for teachers who care so much about our students, who are retiring all the award-winning students with the forensic, I think this was the second year they won gold, it really does warm my heart to be a part of, as Dr. Newman always says, this family. And I truly believe tonight, we showed how awesome we all are. So I just, that's why I wanted to say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Very well put, Mrs. Williams. Next, Mr. Di Maria.
Thank you, sir. Exactly what Mrs. Williams said. The retirees, I didn't know every one of them that was named, but I knew quite a few of them, and there are some big shoes to fill. And anywhere else, I would be very, very worried that we've lost this much experience and knowledge. I'm thrilled for the people that are leaving, and I'm confident in the people that are still here, and the people that will be hiring their replacements, that we're not going to miss a beat. We're going to miss these people, but we're not going to miss a beat. And congratulations to all of them, especially those that, you know, Mr. Strickland, who was with us from day one, and I think that's it. Am I right, Lee? I think he's the last one besides students that are still here, right, Lee? And it was nice of you to be here for your brother when he was awarded and, you know, brought up, but then he left before you were, so.
That's right, sir.
But I, but I was here for you. Speaking of you and Mr. Hawkins, as the senior member up here and the finance chair, I've been through a lot of budgets, and it just keeps getting better. You guys do just such an outstanding job, and it ends with you guys, it starts with you guys, but everybody that works on our budget, from our principals and our directors on up, do such a spectacular job that the distinguished budget presentation is so well-deserved. We've always been good at it, but we've never been this good. And I just appreciate you all so much, because I know that we are run very, very efficiently. And I'm very confident that we are good stewards of the citizens' dollars, and that's mostly thanks to you guys. So thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Welcome, Ms. Di Maria, thank you. Next, Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you, sir. I just want to echo Mr. Di Maria's comments. Congratulations to every student teacher recognized this evening, as well as the retirees. Your commitment to excellence is a great reflection on our schools, as well as our community. So again, congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Well said, Mr. Hollingsworth, thank you. Next, Mrs. Brooks.
I just want to say what a joy it is to be able to see all of the students and the staff, and just the wonderful pool of talent, the wonderful community represented here, all the retirees and the teachers who give their all, and how proud I am to be part of this community and this family and this school board. And kudos to everyone, and thank you for the retirees for all your service, especially those with a really long time. Thank you.
Well said, Mrs. Brooks, thank you. Next, Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you. First, I want to say congratulations to our Skills USA winners, our crime scene team going to nationals. That's a pretty big deal. I look forward to seeing them back up here after nationals, sharing how well they've done, and congratulations to Mr. Joseph for being our state officer and representing our school and the state, I think it's down in Richmond. Congratulations to all our retirees. I know in watching all of those individuals come up, that some of them had my children and made a huge impact on my children's lives. So for me, that's kind of a personal thing. These are some amazing people who are leaving this, us, and really hope they all come back to visit, maybe volunteer, maybe share some of their knowledge, because that was a lot of knowledge in front of us that only comes from experience. And then I wanted to talk for a minute about the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. I just wanted to share two paragraphs from it, because they really explain what the policies are, why they're so important, and they do it much more eloquently than I do. Manassas City Public Schools are committed to the success of every student, family, and staff in each of its schools. Learning and work environments are enriched and improved by the contributions, perspectives, and presence of its diverse student body, community, and staff. Every student, family, and staff member deserves a respectful, welcoming, and inclusive learning environment in which their diversity is valued and contributes to their success. Manassas City Public Schools shall provide all students, families, and staff with the opportunity to succeed and implement practices fostering the growth of all students, so they can achieve academically, regardless of their dimensions of diversity. It is the right of all students to receive a high-quality, equitable education and have a safe social experience at school. That's what makes Manassas City Public Schools special, and that's what Manassas City Public Schools is doing and will be doing in the future to ensure that every student has every opportunity to be the most successful they can be.
Very well said, Ms. Stevens. Thanks for sharing that, it's very important. Next up, Vice Chair Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My personal congratulations to all the students and to the staff members that were acknowledged here tonight. It was so exciting having almost full house here. I also wanted to mention that we're continuing to shine a spotlight on our schools monthly at city council meetings. In May, we featured Osborne High School, which included an update from Principal Mike Flugrath, as well as students' perspective. We're going to continue to feature a different school or a department each month, and city council meetings are held and streamed live, generally on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. I also wanted to do a shout-out to Jonathan Weiner in the audience, who is an Osborne student, and I'm assuming getting some exposure to school board meetings for a rank advancement or something? Yeah. So thank you for coming, and thank you for learning about this, and bring your troop back sometime and do like a flag ceremony for us or something, that would be really nice. And then I also wanted to wish everyone that they have a restful and restorative break this summer, if you get a chance to get some time off. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nicely done, Ms. Vice Chair Seberg. I have a couple of things. Before I do that, though, first, I see that we have a new member here, my fellow Cornelian, I found out, Mr. Feller. So I don't know if Dr. Newman wants to say a couple of words?
We want to officially, I guess we can say officially, since he came to work today. Welcome Craig Feller to our family. I know he was approved, we were on Zoom, so you really didn't get an opportunity to interact with him, and we talked this morning about what was missing over the last 452 days, and that was the personal interactions between humans. There's a lot that you were able to do during Zoom, but that one piece was missing, and that's the key piece on what's important in education. So I know I'm going to put him on the spot, but I'm going to ask him if he has any words, and then again, to officially welcome him to our Manassas City Public School family.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Seberg, just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I am excited to be part of the Manassas City Public Schools family now, and I am ready to do the work, and excited about the vision and where the division is headed, and so I look forward to working with everyone and staff, and getting to know folks, and just excited to hit the ground running. So thank you for the opportunity.
My second item is I usually try to recognize luminaries in the audience, I think we've recognized about everybody, but we do have a former school board member in the back. I don't know if she wants to stand up and wave?
Or just wave?
Ms. Chavez, welcome back. And then my third and last item before I conclude is, the next potentially national holiday coming up is Juneteenth, June the 19th, which is the day slaves in, I think Galveston, Texas, were notified that they were free, and it's been given more attention in the past few years, and I don't know if Dr. Newman wants to say anything about Juneteenth beyond that.
Last year, we did honor the holiday with the official day off for staff. It falls on a Saturday this year, so we will get an announcement out to everyone tomorrow that we will recognize the holiday on the 18th, which is that Friday. So the division will be closed on June 18th.
Thank you very much, and our great employees, I'm sure will appreciate that. And then the last thing I want to say, just about all the folks that were honored, I mean, they're incredible, I could talk all day about them, from the coach who coached my son in football, to Mr. Williams, to everybody, Mr. Strickland, Mr. Young, down the line. But I guess the best way to put it is that nobody does it better than they did, and joining that train, I thought, Ms. Miller, Mr. Hawkins, and your team, no one does it better. You guys are incredible. So with that, I will conclude my comments, and thank you all for being here, and then ask for a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Seberg, and second by, I think it was Mrs. Stevens, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, we are adjourned, seven zero.